Good evening and welcome to the Brookfield Selectmen's Meeting of Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. Would you like to stand and join me in saluting?
I would like to testify in the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to entertain a motion to approve expense warrants for 12/11/18 for $39,273.26 and approve another payroll warrant for 12/5/18 for $166,496.63.
You have that motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have to approve the executive session meeting. They will be voted to approve and released at 6:18.
You have that motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Announcements, a reminder that a winter parking ban is in effect from November 15th to April 1st for all public ways in the town during the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. No parking on the streets, whether or not snow is predicted, or anyone in violation will receive a citation of $25 for the first offense. Then we have another announcement, the town hall will close at noon Monday, December 24th, and it will be closed Christmas Day and to reopen Wednesday, December 26th. The town hall also will close at noon on Monday, December 31st, and on New Year's Day to reopen Wednesday, January 2nd. And Mary, happy holidays and a happy new year to all. And then I have another announcement to make also this evening. Our tax rate has been set this year and it's $18.95 per thousand, and it's gone down 19 cents from last year. And I would like to thank the financial team for all the hard work that they've put in on it.
Yes, good news.
Yes, good news. It's gone down. Okay, our first thing on the agenda tonight is appointments. We have an appointment here, we can probably take an enrollment at once. We have an appointment for the Cultural Council with a term to expire June 30th, 2019, for Jonathan Landry. And then we also have an appointment as ADA Coordinator with a term to expire June 30th, 2019, for Kathy LaRaca.
I think you guys did vote on it.
Definitely did.
We didn't make an appointment, so that's why.
Okay. And then we have another one for an alternate building inspector, and his name is, I don't want to attempt to say it, John Zachar.
Ritz.
Ritz.
Ritzelitz.
So I would like a motion to entertain to appoint these three.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll hand those on to Beth. The next one on the agenda is to sign the Center for Living and Working invoice. That was when we had the, Brookfield had the self-evaluation and the transition plan that was done for the, all the handicap accessibility. And I'd like a, the cost of that, it was a grant, it was $24,600. And I'd like a motion that we can sign this.
Motion to pay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one here is to sign the BETA invoice and contract amendment. And this also is, let's see, where was that? This was on the Finney property.
Yep.
And that's for an extension till March 29th, 2019. And I would like the...
Motion to sign and accept the extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this is part of the CBGD monies.
And the extension's no further cost to us, it's just they need more time to accomplish the scope of work, correct?
Yep, back to the testing.
Yep.
Didn't they do testing on that?
They did, and they did, and that was why we're doing it again, because there was some concern as to what it was supposed to say, what it didn't say.
I'll put them both in the same folder, the invoice too for that.
Oh, the invoice too? Oh, okay, all three of us have to do that. I'd like to take a vote to sign the invoice.
Motion to sign the invoice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one here is some wage optimizations. Do we want to take these individual or all?
Just as all, by the way.
Okay, this is from the Water Department. They want to appoint an interim superintendent, and that will be Bruce Clark. And it's a bi-weekly salary of $2,292.08. Then we have another one here from the Highway Department, from Matthew Langregan, in the position as emergency operator, and that salary is $19.86. And then a board, one from the Board of Health for James Milner. He will be the transport station manager, and the hourly rate will be $16.45. And then we have one here also from Sharon Mahoney from the Planning Board for Christine Wiseman, who will be their new clerk. And the salary, hourly wage will be $15 an hour.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or anything from anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you get the one back from the library? No, that's, that didn't come back because it was what it made already.
Oh, no, we did not get that.
The next one on our agenda is to sign the open space contract agreement.
So there's two pieces to this. There's a contract with the state, that's this document.
Yeah.
And that, that document is straightforward. It's an 80% grant for $10,000 for the open space work that would be done between now and next year. And so that's all set. What was confusing was that there was a misunderstanding from CMRPC, and they, the document that they sent us was for $12,000. That we should vote tonight that it should match the $10,000. And CMRPC just will fix, will update, and we can, if we vote to sign for $10,000. What that's, the proviso there is that the committee and Kathy LaRaca will spend roughly 100 hours over an eight-month period for support of the grant at 25 bucks an hour, that ends up to be 2,500 bucks, which is the 20% that the town owes. So it would be our in-kind part of the grant activity. So, so I'd make the grant that we'd sign the Commonwealth's contract, and we would update the CMRPC agreement to match and have that signed by CMRPC.
I'd like to make a motion, have the chair sign these contracts?
Motion, second.
Yes?
I thought you made the motion.
I thought you made the motion.
Yeah, I made the motion.
And so I seconded it.
So I'm just waiting to vote.
Any discussion or anything on that?
The one question I had, and this is related to some correspondence that I passed on to Karen, I don't know if it got to everybody, is that as part of the open space plan, we probably need to talk about the future of the beach?
Definitely.
I had an in-depth conversation, there was an email that I forwarded a couple of times, actually. And then I had an in-depth discussion with the Chair of the REC Committee, Jeff Landine, and they just, they don't have the bandwidth to support it. One of the recommendations that have been getting kicked around would be either to, if the Open Space Committee was willing to at least weigh in on what they think a good plan might be, or if we want to solicit for maybe a three- or five-person subcommittee, that REC was willing to oversee a subcommittee, but the people currently on REC just don't feel that they have the bandwidth to put the time into it, then they'd be willing to entertain that. So I don't know how you all feel about it. If, I know you have more contact with the Open Space Committee, I don't know if anybody from that committee has any interest.
I don't see them beaching. I did talk to Kukulalayra, and they don't have the bandwidth. And it really boils down to the feeling that, at least the conversation over the last weekend with a couple of people were with those that are using the beach. It really hasn't become a town beach, it's now become a regional beach for others than Brookfield. And so they're a bit frustrated that we ought to just turn it back over to the state.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's some frustration on both sides of that argument, because I think there's been, many of the condition issues have nothing to do with the individuals using the beach, some of it is erosion.
Oh, and that's also true.
Stuff like that.
Yep.
So some of it is just the overall condition of the beach would require substantive investment. So unless a group is willing to step forward, who wants to really take ownership of it, then we may be in a position where we do need to let it go.
So we may have, again, this, it will be definitely part of the open space dialogue, for sure. Because it was on the list, the first round that we had earlier in the year. And so we'll have to talk more about it. But again, there's lots of emotion around it right now.
There it is.
It's a shame, it was a nice, it was such a nice beach.
It is nice.
Yeah, and I think there's a level of frustration, because I know Ian, the gentleman that set up the whole cleanup, had also been looking to bring some materials in, and apparently got, somehow that all got derailed, which is contributing to the state of the beach.
Yep, but the walkway pathways, major renovation needs to be done.
Right, exactly.
Yep, so what we should do is this, we should get this on the calendar for January.
Yes.
And we, again, separate and distinct, to see if we can get some volunteers, or we'll just have to pick it.
And get a couple of members of the recreation, maybe we can get Jeff to come in, and maybe we can get Ian to come in, and we can probably talk to the two of them about, see how they feel.
I think Ian actually resigned.
He did.
Oh, did he?
Yes.
He's going to do open space.
Yes.
So he'll, and his focus will be the playground.
Right.
But that, and quite honestly, back to the open space contract and kind of bringing, coming off full circle, what this round of open space contracts are talking about is that you have to actually do something at moving forward.
Right.
And one of the projects that has been on the REC's list has been the playground, because the playground is not necessarily compliant for today's standards. And so that there needs to be major work done to it. And with the quotes that Ian has gotten, that would be a neat little project that could be done under an open space grant.
Well, that would be nice.
80/20?
It's important.
Again, 80/20, again.
So we would just have to get the, either payment in kind or additional funds from Tom Eaton?
And the thought that Ian and I had was if Herb would do the, or Highway would do the groundwork, half of the cost of the playground was the groundwork.
Oh, wow, so that would be an easy.
I'm sure we will.
Again, a lot of loose ends to see what you had to pull together, but I think it may be something that could work.
And it's important we get up to compliance, because we don't want to have any cross.
Anybody hurt, exactly.
Yep.
Yep.
And then, then like you were saying with the beach, we should get the feelings of the REC Commission, Jeff, how he feels about maybe appointing some kind of a subcommittee so they can oversee it.
Well, the problem is, they don't have anybody currently on the committee that's willing to take it on. So the only way that they would...
Not even to oversee it?
No, they're having a tough time getting coaches.
They just don't have the bandwidth. So we would either need someone to step forward to oversee it.
Really too bad, because I mean, we used to have such, you'd have an overflow of people wanting to coach, and had the beach going, it's too bad. I know people today, they're very busy with, you know, their everyday lives, and I think that has a lot, a lot to do with it.
Well, it really comes to, our generation, Linda, we need to think about volunteering, and our age group needs to come forward, because to think about retirement, we really need to think about what we can give back to the town.
Well, changing from that for a minute, the same thing. We had a church event that went on Saturday, no, Sunday. It was a Christmas party for the children. And it was, we're the new committee taking over, and we, you know, we're all the same, all the same age. And, you know, you would think that maybe that some of the parents of the children would take over, but they don't have, they don't have the interest in it.
They don't have the time.
So, you know, it's the same, it's the same thing with everything.
Yep, so we got to work it.
That's what you have to do.
Volunteers out there, come on down, we've got plenty of stuff you can do.
Yeah, we have all kinds of volunteers.
So we need to vote that, so you can sign it.
Oh, I thought we voted it already.
No, we didn't, that was the discussion.
We had a discussion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
There's two to vote on, there's to vote on the contract and the agreement.
Yep.
Okay, we want to, we sign on the contract, I'd like to have a motion to sign the agreement, and a motion to sign the contract.
You have those motions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next one is declare surplus. And this is from Chief Martell. He said the 1986 GMC chassis is now surplus properties. Please ask the board to allow me to dispose on, you know, bid, thanks.
Motion to dispose.
Second.
Great job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we want to get going a little early here on the...
We can't.
Oh, we can't?
We can't. Yeah, we can take stuff out of order, I'll make a motion to take the other items out of order.
Okay. I'll, yeah, I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is special use permits, some more for the ponds. This is for 7/20/19, Quay Bog, it's the aluminum fishing series. The next one is South Pond, the aluminum fishing series, and that is for 7/20/19. And this, this one is for 9/15/19 for South Pond, it's also the aluminum fishing series. And the last one here is for Quay Bog Pond for 9/29/19, and it's the D97. I'd like to have a motion that these can be signed.
Motion to sign the special use permits for the ponds.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and this is signed by...
Beth.
Beth. Our next one on the agenda is to sign the contract from the state for the Cultural Council. And it's money they get every year in the amount of $8,923.87, and a vote to allow the chair to sign these.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And to go along with the reduction in the tax rate, looking at our agenda, we've had a good night as far as the numbers of grants and funds coming to the town.
Right, and still getting stuff done.
Exactly.
It's kind of a neat trick.
Okay, now these are to set some meeting dates, that's the next thing on our agenda. Okay, January 8th?
If I, if I can attend, it'll be telephonically, because I'm going to be potentially not available.
Do you know if there's much going for that?
There's nothing on it right now, I know what, I know you just said you wanted to have Jeff in so we can make it the second one in January, so.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Nothing on so far, not to say there won't be by then.
Right.
But we'll try to make it, another issue is that ZBA has a hearing that they set for 6 o'clock. They assured me they'll be done by 6:30, but I don't know about that. Worst-case scenario, we can have it in the selectman's office, so I'll try to make it a light agenda, just in case that happens, and since she probably won't be here.
Or unless, if you guys are up to it, we could just do back-to-back to 15th and 22nd.
Well, let's wait and see, if it becomes too busy and I have to put a lot on, and that's what we'll do, if I can get away with it being a light agenda, then it...
It's fine.
Okay, so we have January 8th and the 22nd. February 5th and the 19th, and March 5th and the 19th. A motion to...
Motion to set those dates.
Second.
While we're talking about dates, back to open space. Karen, could you reserve this room for the 16th at 6:30?
January 16th, 6:30.
I meant to mention that, I'm going to start.
I don't have the ma, I don't have the master pass to post that. I mean, I can reserve it in that, I can put it up on my wall calendar, but you want me to ask Mike to post it, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, would you do?
Okay, we need an agenda though.
I'll send, I'll send this.
Send it, okay.
It's actually going to be CMRPC's meeting, but...
Just send it what you want.
Yeah, I'll send it, yep.
So I'd like to have a motion that we set these dates.
Yeah, you have that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is... These came, oh, this is, we have to sign this, this came from the Commonwealth of Mass, it's on the licensing authority certification for the change of location for the Central Street package.
What it is, it is a way that we have a hearing, and you're voting to agree, is an additional factor that you just have to sign off on.
Good motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's nothing under, anything that corresponds?
Oh, yeah. Because you get correspondence, there's those...
Conservation should be at the police station.
The two dams, your two dams.
Okay.
Nice meeting over there, actually. That's good meeting over there.
Yep, it is.
That wouldn't even be another stop, we could even meet, say that, huh?
Yeah, you could, actually.
If they're, if they're busy, we could always meet down at the police station.
Yeah, we'll see with the agenda.
Yeah, we'll see what it is.
Use the office.
Okay, then under our correspondence, it's the DCR order to prepare action plan for the dams. We've got something in here from the state on the, it's an order to prepare an emergency action plan for the potential dams, the one at Sawmill Pond, and the other one is the Cooley Hill reservoir dam. And so the one on the Sawmill Pond will be taken care of by the Highway, and then the other copy went to the buyer's lawyer who was purchasing the Cooley Hill dam, and they don't have any objection to that, so far. So far.
So far.
So that's it for that, and, okay.
Okay, so, we're going to do a couple of others, see if we can get a couple minutes.
That's about it.
I'll let you go first.
Okay, the senior center meeting the other day, I attended that meeting, and probably two-thirds of the conversation centered around the viability of a senior center in the room. The way I left it with the discussion was that the worst case, because now we have an architect that we're, that's essentially free to the town, it's costing $2,000 of the architect's cost that the town has had to pony up. But the $2,000 in the scheme of it is not a lot of money to get some actual drawings so that we can figure out what is possible downstairs. There was a study done before, and Andrew tried to explain all of that, but it just was frustration on the part of a number of the attendees that, you know, should we actually do this? And as I left it, I said, at least we'll find out if there's show stalkers of having anything in the basement. One of the things that came up was where the entrance might be, and because of the parking lot and all the rest, they were looking to have some sort of patio area behind the building here as the access into the building. And what that does is that takes away from parking, so you have a loose type that way. The other thing that comes to bear is that when, I want to say Warren did their town hall, they put a senior center in the basement, and one of the things that came through with that is that they couldn't have an inside stairwell to the senior center. It had to be all, the access all had to be from the outside. And so, again, it's another, what do you do about that? And so, at least now we have an architect that's hired that's going to come up with drawings to understand where the issues are, so that we can decide once and for all whether or not we spend the money. Again, they're talking a million bucks to do it.
Oh, my God.
And to rehab it. But at least we'll now know whether it's practical or not to spend any more money in that area.
And we've talked, it's really a shame, we've talked about having, you know, a senior center for years here in town, and I know it would be nice if we could get, you know, a good part of that grant money to do it.
Exactly, well, and the other thing was, there was a lot of discussion about regionalized and services and the like. We do a lot of regionalized, regionalization of services today, but then the question was, why can't you do more?
Yeah.
So again, so like I said, two-thirds of the conversation was on feasibility and sharing, and one-third was what would a senior center want to look like.
I know that Mrs. Clancy had talked about, she's the Chair of the Council on Aging, she had talked about joining West Park.
Right, and that came up.
I hadn't heard much going on that, if they were in agreement with her or not.
Well, I did attend, and... Well, I did attend, and probably a good thought, is I attended the CMRPC Elder Affairs session two weeks ago where they brought in three speakers as how to address, because again, elder issues, it is understood that sixty-five-plus population is gonna double in the next ten years in Southern Worcester County. And what do you do? One of the, one of the speakers was from Surbridge, and she does a program with folks that have dementia. And they have, they bring their caretaker or caregiver to come to the meetings and whatnot. And what she was expressing was some of the best practices of that session. And she encouraged us to participate as well. They have twelve people today, and they could accept probably double that number. And more or less encouraged us, Brookfield, to attend if we would like. So, I thought that was...
Yeah, that if that's good, it would include us. You know, it's really a shame we don't have, you know, a space for it because, you know, like so many like North Brookfield. I mean, they have different classes that go on, you know, they do exercise classes. What they don't do up there, they have the fashion shows. And then same thing with Spencer, they have quite a program down in the town of Spencer also. It's really, it's really a shame we don't have anything here for the seniors.
You're working.
We have to work on it, definitely. Maybe Beth is too young for it right now, but...
No, but if we start now, I might, we might get it all set by the time I get there.
Yeah, we'll be gone. Beth had something in at seven?
I did. I had something relatively quick. I just wanted to...
We'll give you ten seconds.
Okay, if you give me ninety, I promise I can make it.
Okay, all right.
Is the East Brookfield bridge work that needs to happen that results in... It's kind of a bizarre situation because they have to do a temporary land taking, but they're only taking land basically from, of their own from the state. So, there is a, basically like a bypass option with Mass General Law that allows us to basically put together some sort of expert ad hoc committee that determines that it has no impact on the town, that we could then just send a formal letter back, and it would keep us from having to incur any like real legal costs associated with that. So, with y'all's permission, I wanted to basically put together that ad hoc committee with police chief, EMS, highway, conservation commission, and then my, I was gonna recommend myself as a representative from the Board of Selectmen. We do a five-person committee, we hold one meeting, we discuss all the impacts. We do a formal letter to East Brookfield and to the contractor, we're done.
Yeah, makes total sense.
I don't have any problem with that at all.
Awesome. But yeah, there's, fortunately, there's no private landowners in that space, so the taking is a lot less complicated, and it is only temporary for the period of the work.
Well, thank you for wanting to, you know, get that going. Okay, a little past seven, but we are going to open up. We have a, we had last, two weeks ago, we had a hearing, and we've continued it tonight on the Brookfield Auto at fourteen Post Road. Would you gentlemen like to come up and have a seat? Hello. We had asked for a couple of things at our next meeting, at our last meeting. One of them was, have you gotten a business certificate yet for the town clerk?
Right, we didn't go, the reason is because we got, we got the actual form. And the business certificate that you mentioned is doing business as certificate. And in Massachusetts, you know, Brookfield Auto is a legal entity in itself, and it's doing business in its own name. So, there's no, it's like impossible to file on the top of it another business certificate. Like if Brookfield Auto, for example, was doing business as, I don't know, some other name, then we would go as a Brookfield Auto and obtain a certificate, you know, doing business as certificate in that other name. But, and the business entity that is registered with the Secretary of State is the same as, almost like a human being. It's a separate entity that is doing business in its own name, so...
But still, people have come up, though, and filed business certificates with us.
So, does Mike agree?
Does Mike, does Mike Serry agree with this?
The point is that, you know, one, first of all, there's two different types of legal liability. Because the reason people are filing the Secretary of State at the state level is to protect the business, the people that own the business, you know, to, you know, from whatever, any kind of liability that could occur. So, if something happens in the business, I'm not personally liable. It's the business that's doing business, and that's like all over the state. That's the rule, that's the law. And if I go and file this certificate, that means if somebody, God forbid, you know, falls on, you know, parking lot or whatever, and the insurance company has a million-dollar coverage or whatever, and somebody's suing for two million dollars, they're gonna go directly after me instead of, you know, whatever the business, you know, has the coverage for. That's the reason people are doing LLCs or, you know, corporations, you know, all these entities that you file at the level of Secretary of State. If you do file on the top of it a doing business as, first of all, it's not even designed for that purpose, but also it's gonna conflict with this particular, you know, purpose. So, legally, it's gonna be a huge conflict. It's not, it's not legally possible.
Well, I was, I was the town clerk for over twenty years.
I assure you to.
And people that had the LLC, they all, they used to come in and register their businesses. And so that the business, if people wanted to know if they were a licensed business in the town of Brookfield, a registered business.
Right, but like I said...
And I've never heard any, I've never heard anything like you told us before.
It's also written here, you can read, you can look at it.
I don't know, I've been gone since 2010. I don't think things have changed that much in eight years.
People can do it. It's not that they cannot do it. It just doesn't make any sense.
So, when the recommendation, because actually the permit is the key question this evening. So, the requirement, the goal would be that Mike would have to sign off, that he does not have to have a business certificate from the town.
Yep, okay.
And so, as a condition of any agreements that we make tonight, that you would meet with the town clerk, verify of any documents that need to be signed as far as a business certificate. Because I think what did come up the last time was some confusion as far as contact information and the like.
That's been fixed.
And that document would have provided better information as far as contact information and the like. So, there may be a value in filling out the form.
Yeah, except there's a legal liability. And I'm willing to talk to him, not only that, we can get somebody from the Secretary of State on the phone, on speakerphone, and talk over there and clarify the problem. I don't think it's a big deal.
That's the job.
So, she should probably come up and talk to Mike.
Sure.
He'll be here, his office, will he be here from two to eight tomorrow?
Usually two to eight.
Two to eight tomorrow, Wednesdays.
When is he there?
He's two to eight tomorrow, and then usually he's here at nine AM.
Okay.
I'll call him first to make sure what time he wants to meet.
Yeah, and he's extension twelve.
Okay, thanks.
His card's on the paperwork. So, I have a conversation, we'll make sure.
Sure.
And one of the other things on it was we had asked, too, we found out, and I think Karen said that Beth had also agreed to see your log from the last year on who you sold vehicles to?
I have the log. I can give it to you maybe a little bit later. The reason I found out, like, I think, what was it, two o'clock? Around two o'clock, I wasn't even in town when I found out that this was a requirement, and, you know, I mean...
Because we found out from town council, legally, we can ask for that.
Sure, I mean, I don't mind, it's just, you know, I just need a little bit more time.
And the next thing here, we wanted to know, I guess...
Current complaints are clear.
Current complaints are all clear, and this one was one...
He's here today. He's in the office. Is he in? No, he's not in.
Son is here, what? Son is here.
I was talking about Mike.
No, how do you say his last name, Karen? Mike Mastrianto?
You'll have to, you'll have to try. You're Italian, I bet. I have to give you a try.
Mike Mastriato, okay. He had some problems here with, I guess, with you on some tires. He had bought for a twenty, twenty-eight-year-old Volvo, and said that Cooper was better than his old tires, so... He brought him online.
I actually spoke to him at like...
Did you? Say to him on my phone?
Yeah, I did. I spoke to him at like, because I, it was, it was, he happened into the office, actually, when I was here the other day. And there were a couple of different aspects of this that I still don't know that I'm totally comfortable with, though I don't know how much recourse we have in this body. But, and I was hoping that he'd be here tonight with some more information because it sounded like there wasn't even really a minimum due diligence done with the tire mounting and balancing, that the stems were, he basically left the original stems on, that the tires weren't properly balanced. I know I've had bad experiences with shops myself and them not properly balancing tires when they put them on there. I did, I was concerned where, I understand what you're saying, where you didn't feel he could return the tires a week later. I mean, from what you said the other day, but there is, I don't know if when he first came back to you was within the timeframe for the state of Massachusetts where he can pretty much return anything if you're not satisfied from a standpoint of vehicle. And I'm very concerned, and it sounds like none of the warranty information was ever passed on to him so that if there was any issue with the tires in the future, it sounded like he didn't really do due diligence and pass through the information related to the original tire purchase.
Well, Mike was in our shop every day, so at any given point, he could have said something.
Yeah, but it sounds like when he did say something to you, it wound up going south pretty quick.
He threatened us. That's when it went south, yeah. Correct.
Well, he's not here to speak for himself.
He's right there.
Is he?
He's sitting right there.
He threatened. I shook him down. This is ridiculous. Every time there's a problem with these guys, they turn it on to somebody else. The last thing I heard is I went in and tried to shake him down to get him, you know, now this guy threatened him?
Mike, would you like, are you Mike or Asher?
Excuse me?
Are you Asher or Mike?
I'm Michael.
Michael, would you like to come up and speak on this?
Yeah, I never threatened him. He threatened me in his tone of voice. He told me that he wasn't going to replace the tires, and it was in an assault tone of voice, some assault. And then he told me to leave his premises because he wasn't gonna fix the tires, just to make something. The ball tires worked better than the tires that he bought from another dealer in Spencer. So, I'm the third on, he made me believe that he could go into a tire warehouse and get the tires for less than $1,000. The tires we looked at on the computer, he told me that were discontinued because they're only available through ours. I've been using them. The tires that he gave me are for an all-wheel-drive vehicle. They're terrible in the snow. I can't drive in the snow. I was gonna get a job driving a plow, now I can't get to the job. He's been playing me since the middle of August. He thinks I'm old. I thought Joe Smalley took that dealership over because it's such a huge dealership. He wanted me to hook him up with Joe Smalley at the auction, and he was talking about getting him a hundred thousand dollar loan. He said he had another hundred thousand dollars to match it. I think that's baloney, too. I worked for George Butler Chevrolet for about nine years when I was young in high school with Mr. Butler. It was a first-class house. I also worked for the Central Mass Auto Auction from 1999 to 2006 when it was on Shrewsbury Street, and it's in Worcester. This guy's, both of them, full of baloney. They lie. They're constant liars. He's got a girl over there, and he said, he had me, the fire chief said they couldn't get the hoses through the fence. I worked for six hours out there in the hot sun clearing that and chopping trees down so the fire chief could get his thing through. I figured he was gonna help me out. He just kept shoving it up my behind. I mean, both of these guys, they're both con artists. This guy especially on the right. He's the biggest con artist I ever seen. I spent thirty-six over the years driving over the road in my own trucks. I own Mike's Trucking Company. It's in the State Commerce Commission, license number 202568. I've seen it just about every trip into the book. There's nothing this can tell me, either one of them, that I haven't seen before. But the two of them, I'm a pretender lawyer, was bait and switch. He played with me. Then he sent me to the auction to pick up God's farm two times. His secretary wants to sell me every kind of drug in the world. They're over there smoking weed in the daytime. I mean, this is what you want for a business in the top. They're both for honors.
You want to say?
I have a real, real drive car. It's horrible and strong for both tires. It's horrible. I've been using this good year's life since I moved here in 2007.
Whatever. Thank you for that input. We should ask for that input now. So, just for a second. So, would you ask for a public comment?
Yeah, I have a question to the chairman.
No, no, public comment, not a question, public comment. Do you have a comment? If we determine that we can ask that question, we will ask that question. So, you're directing it to the board. We're looking for public input.
In the last meeting, these gentlemen mentioned they were collecting for toys for tots. And they basically said they were doing... Bad reputation. Well, I'm curious. I know the Marine Corps leaves toys for tots, and you're not registered with them. How do you do with the toys? And how you can collect toys for tots when you're not registered with the Marine Corps?
Okay, so that's your question, okay. All right, and that question then came to the board, the chairman, can direct the question to them.
Question that you're not registered with the Marines for the tots?
I can't, actually. The, we did it with a group of businesses that did it through a four-wheel-drive club in the state of Massachusetts. Actually, they were the second-biggest collector, and they appreciated. There was another question on our Facebook about the same subject, where it was questioned as to why we weren't registered. We did it through a secondary group. There were several businesses besides ourselves that did collect and did participate. We did it at expense to our store. We did pay for all the product that we did put out to the customers. They did come in and get free oil changes. It's an eighty-dollar oil change that we paid for out of our pocket. We did not make anything really out of it. For people that already had their oils changed, we gave them a certificate to come back and get it done. So, yes, we did get it, do it, reach out to the community to try to let them know that it is safe and good to come into our store again, that things have changed, to meet the staff. And those who have, we have, God, I have a stack of emails, a stack of Facebook compliments, and thank yous for the way that they were treated, so we can give you all those as well.
Could we see them to look at?
Certainly. Yeah, there's a whole bunch there. Yeah, that's the email, that's different. There's all that one. This one is something totally different.
So, is this the same?
Yes, the same one.
Okay, we have two of the same.
Well, this is on the, that one's on the, the next complaint.
And that's a statement from, she's a former employee of ours. She couldn't be here this evening, but she did do a statement for us because she is working. Also, the gentleman who was our mechanic at the time, who did do the balancing of the tires and all that for Michael, he couldn't be, he was gonna try and be here, but unfortunately, he's still working. He said if we needed to get him on the phone, he'd be more than willing to take a phone call from us, if you'd like to speak to him over the phone, just to answer your questions if you'd like. Because he did do the work. He did do all the work on the vehicle. On Michael's car. Also, you have the original invoice that I asked you for. That's the original, original. I don't want that.
What copies?
I want the copies, please. So, me copies for everyone. This is exactly what Michael paid us and reasoned that's like that? Because Michael didn't pay us right away. I actually kept forgetting. He kept reminding me. Because he did give us two shuttle rides. He didn't even want to charge me. I told him I would pay somebody else to do it. I would definitely, there's no way I was gonna not pay him.
Did you say they were trying to do another deal or two? Another goodwill policy?
Michael, if you'd like a copy of this, you'd more than welcome to have it. I said I want to read it aloud.
Oh, there's emails, yes.
You can have these.
What's that?
They're in this view.
I have another question for the selectmen, however you raise it.
Yeah.
In the last meeting, you asked them to bring in a record of everything they resolved in form of complaints. And I'm curious, when you see this record of the corrected complaints. Last meeting, they were asked specifically by you guys, and that's being brilliant documentation to show you've done something.
Yeah, I was the one that made that statement, actually. I was the one that made that statement, actually.
And I'm wondering if they brought this documentation in?
It appears that some documentation has come in.
Yeah.
Well, we are, we all are very well aware how Facebook and these pages can be manipulated. We're all very advanced. I mean, this is something that's easy to do. There are women on Facebook that don't even exist, and they're bringing in Facebook postings to say, see how good we are. This isn't proof. This is non-substantial proof. Facebook, where do you know what's happening in our election through Facebook? It's a fraud. It's phony. There's no, there's no proof in bringing Facebook articles and language statements and saying we're a good business. I can generate probably a thousand likes on my Facebook page. It's easy to do.
And the chairman? I think that we have, we have disputes. There are disputes with this business. There's absolutely no question about it. It's back to our actions, and our actions are that, that we now have a forum where we can talk about and discuss and decide what, what to do going forward. Unfortunately, a lot of this never did come before us.
I know.
Directed to others.
I was just gonna say, yeah, same thing.
To cut this off, and not just for that, maybe that's bad language, but I, I would, I'm ver- I'm very concerned.
Oh, I, I feel the same way. I'm very concerned with this too.
Sharon's got input.
Sure.
I just wanted, I called up the website for your information, project information. There's no individual's name.
Still listed, which is one of the things that we requested for the website.
Right. There's just an email address, info@brookfieldauto.com. There's a fax number and a regular number, and there's a listing of ours, but there is no manager's name, there is no owner's name, there is no contact name for a secretary or the minister.
We asked him to correct all of that, and he said he would.
He said just now that he had.
So, so we're, eh?
Can I reply to this?
Of what?
Okay. We talked here, last time, we talked about not being a correct address here because what the concern was, some people are not good with internet, eh, you know, things of that nature. So what we did is, I can show you that, we went and we actually put in the our P O box like we discussed last time, so if somebody wanted to write a letter without, you know, using internet, all they have to do is go on our website and take a look. It's like, I believe it's on the top and on the bottom, the P O box address is there. So if somebody wants to write a regular letter, they can easily do that.
So they just generically assign it to the manager of Brookfield Auto?
What, the email or the mail?
Yeah.
The email, yes. There's a generic email that goes into us. It's not going into garbage. I mean, if somebody writes something, we'll get it. I mean, you know, this, some people put personal names, some people don't put personal names, sometimes employees change, you know, you usually don't put somebody's name unless it's a salesperson who wants everybody to call him or write to him. So for complaints, usually a generic form, but it goes to the appropriate address.
So do we have the correct address and contact information today?
Yes.
Did he, didn't he?
It's right on the front page.
He was supposed to get them.
Yeah, this is, this is the front page.
So if we had any more complaints coming?
And how does that conflict?
But did he give you his name and address and the phone number?
It is on the website.
Pardon me?
It is on the website.
Good, but then what we have is chairman conflicting that.
Well, no, what's on there, the address is on the website. There's no contact names or indications of who our business. So if you're, so if you were.
Yeah, but we didn't require that.
No.
We require contact information.
Right.
So we, okay, so Sharon, we didn't ask that they put the contact information on the website. What we asked them to do is have, have what he has provided us. So he did do that. Where I, I think I'm still hung up is that, and you got to, I apologize. We have the contact information.
Yes, we do.
So, so before, before this license gets signed, how this license gets signed, I still don't, I'm not sure how that happens, but that you must go see the town clerk, and he must have your actual contact information. If he doesn't, I don't care about whether you're in business or not by some state organization. We need the exact contact information by the town clerk, because if somebody comes in to complain, they're gonna come to the town clerk and they're gonna ask, and we want to be able to be there.
Now, the, the other concern that I know that's expressed in a couple of different documents, okay? And it's one thing that the state of Massachusetts would care about, whether or not you, in essence, have, um, in essence, the business, a substantial business, okay? So when there's a car dealership, auto dealers in the state of Massachusetts, it has to be a person that has the means.
Resources.
Resources, um, to ensure that they're capable of fulfilling all of the obligations of an auto dealer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So our request for the transaction loan is probably a little late to have it available at this time, okay? Um, I don't know that if there's similar patterns of reports of behavior to what we have seen over the last year regarding your business, that we would ever consider this again without that information substantially provided.
You mean the logbook of all transactions?
Whatever you feel would be appropriate financial documentation that indicates it's a true going business related to auto dealership in the town of Brookfield.
Whatever you'd like. That's easy to provide.
Yeah, that's.
That really is easy to provide.
So you want the financial transaction, purchases, sales, purchases, sales?
It's a logbook.
Either, either a logbook, yeah, the logbook.
Keep that from our vehicle and everybody, that's.
Well, yeah, I was thinking in terms of balance sheet, but 10K is actually probably right there.
Financial statement, eh? You have to file a 10K.
Yeah.
Right? So.
10K?
Thank you. It's a financial document. Says, says that the Secretary of State or.
Well, income tax return.
It's, it's similar to an income tax return, but it's a business.
Well, if he's an L O C, he wouldn't do a 10K. It's only, it's only a corporation would do a 10K. L O Cs are filed as individual personal income even though they're.
So your, your strategy was to look at the logbook, eh?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so we have, we have a meeting with the town clerk to verify that he has the addresses and contact information complete, and you have a request that the, the review of the logbook.
Yes.
Now, who should they present it to?
The, the logbook. You know, Softman's office, so I could look at it.
You're saying going forward, or you're saying?
No, immediate, that, that you're capable of being in business.
And then you were also supposed to meet with the town clerk so that he's gonna sign off saying that you don't have to register with him in the town.
Okay.
He's good. He's good. Our guy has the contact information. And he, he fills out that form or another form. Mike is gonna have the contact information.
But I, I would like to also see that you're registered with the Secretary of State also.
Or we can check that online.
Can we?
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Is it under Brookfield Auto?
I'd like to see that also.
No, as far as the settlement of situation, wherever we have, you know that we have.
You have two complaints, at least, that you're not, they're not satisfied, and you have to work on that.
I don't know what to go for here going forward because I have Michael, I mean, these tires, his, I don't know what else to go with that. Actually, I have Michael's snow tires in my shop still, from where he left them. So if you have a problem with snow tires, Michael, if you're giving your snow tires back, I actually asked him if he wanted me to bring them with me this evening in wondering if you were gonna be here.
You told me a week ago when you were gonna have them arrested.
I never said that to you, but.
So you need, you need to resolve that.
You need yourself.
And, and where, what I would put forward is a motion that the Brookfield Auto Department on probationary period, such that the town clerk information is reviewed and the logbook be reviewed, and that you report back how, how, and again, it can be a negative as far as how you've resolved complaints that we know aren't. But.
What's the other?
I've got two gentlemen here that have spoken negatively this evening.
The other gentleman, as we discussed last week, was not concerned about getting his vehicle fixed. He wanted $3,000 for some marijuana growing. That's what he sold to the manager.
So, so, so.
Which has nothing to do with the more severe situation wrong. I mean, which we spoke of this week.
You're something else. You are something else. I came into your shop in July.
Sir, please, sir, please, director, you got it.
Director, no, and no, no argument, or we'll shut you off.
I came into their shop in July because they just reopened. I chased them for over a year. Here I chased these guys trying to get this resolved.
Manager, through you, may I ask a question? Of the gentleman, what issues still exist on your vehicle?
On the vehicle? Nothing.
Okay, what, what, what issues still exist on the vehicle that, that should, that it should not have been transferred to you in that condition?
The fourth tire, the fifth tire was a spare.
Yeah, I remember you said that in the gas tank.
It's never been repaired. And I wasn't asking for a new top. You guys are ridiculous. It stitches, saw it, creases it, it's all gone, ripped and all. I'm not asking for a lot, a lot. And then it's a matter of, it's a gas tank pan that holds the gas tank up. They had duct taped it and painted it black so you couldn't see it. My son, the day I bought it, put his finger through it, and they said they would take care of it. These three issues. Now, in addition, the manager stole personal property from me. I told this person, I think in July, when I, when I went to see him, when they first opened their doors, I asked him.
But didn't you say that was the previous manager?
No, it's, yes, it was the previous manager, but Boris is the owner. The same to the Ukraine. You don't bury your mistakes and go like this and say it's over. He's still responsible for that person's actions. This is the rule of law you're talking about. He's still responsible. You can't, I don't say we're not gonna, we're not gonna hold that agreement anymore. It's a, it's a contract that was held with the business, not the manager. Now, when I saw him in July, I said, hey, does Boris or the other individual who was the manager still own this? And he said, no, they had nothing to do with it. And I told him, this is why I'm looking for him. There's $3,000 worth of equipment they took from me, and I need these things fixed on my car. I wasn't just driving on them. This is the value of the equipment that was taken from me. I told them I'd be happy to get 50% of that back at this point I'd been chasing for so long to fix my car. And by the way, I spoke to J K Auto today, and he said, bring the guy down and we'll fix it. But I want them to do it because they're responsible for it.
Madam Chairman.
Nobody said it's $3,000.
Madam Chairman, there are disputes.
Yes, I, I understand.
And so that these gentlemen are in business, and they have disputes. We are not empowered to correct their mistakes or anything else.
It's not up to us.
So, so that I'm now at three things. Contact with the town clerk to assure that we have the correct contact information, the correct forms. We have the need to review the logbook.
Yeah.
And we would like a formal letter from the business as to the current conflicts and how you're gonna resolve them, positive or negative.
I understand. Can I add one little thing?
Yep.
And I was gonna suggest like you had about either a.
Of the three places that I went to for restoration, it's the tires. See, there's a robot, Tom Fair Tire, Walmart. They all give three to date free trial with the tires. If you bring about anything back to Walmart, I'll take you back if you don't like it. The road would be associated with the value of the new replacement of the tires when you get a higher price. One time balance is loose. I'm using the rotation of the tire. Which is the after this recall?
I'm, there's five.
I like trucks. If I have a problem with a tire on the road, I go to Walmart and I'm like.
Hang on.
I'm gonna say it. I'm gonna go and buy 3,000. You couldn't resolve that debt. The tire's on three years old. He had a dealership over there. I'm sure he didn't use that tire on more than two of his tires. But he didn't want to make it good. Stuck the money in his pocket and ran it. He seen that I got the loan from Mr. Cutcliffe, and he was solid, solid payment. He had to have that home over to my pocket. I had already went to Walmart. I had already told him I was gonna get a tire from Walmart. But he told me he could move out because he was the dealer. I think he was on the, he had his new tire. I was in a truck with him, saw my life. I had a build with Van and Tire in August, Massachusetts, where I could ride the tires through the second brother, third brother, all right. I had 300,000, 350,000 dollars, 200,000, 60,000 dollars. I thought he had the same deal. And, you know, the way they run this place, this fraud, it's all very flawed. I was involved with the FBI. And the fraud case was 30 years ago, about 20 years ago, at the time of saying that they're stealing the houses. Now, the base of the attorney, a few dozen, called the son of five attorneys in Austin, went to jail at the high test for a federal infringement. This is fraud.
If I may, just to address that. So Town Fair and everybody gives you a 30-day guarantee to return your tires and buy another set of tires from them. What Mr. Master Totoro told me when he came into my story, he told me that he's spoken to Cooper, and they had already told him that they will refund. He should be able to get his money back. He did go to Cooper. That's the email I provided you. They contacted me to find out. I had to send them over a copy of the invoice that I'd sent them. I also sent them a copy of the invoice that I already given you with last week or two weeks ago from Kyle's, and, which had the cost on it. They wanted that from me because they wanted to see how much was charged, what was done, and everything like that. They did state to him, they said, we never told him that he would get his money back, that we would gladly transfer that money to another set of tires for him, which was something he would not accept, which was something he would not accept from us, which was something he would not accept from anyone. When I told Michael that I would gladly give him his money back, I just need to find out how I would be made whole, that is when Michael said to me, look, I'm not gonna eat these tires. You can put them on another used car. I don't care. And that's when he got belligerent in my showroom. I don't understand why he did it. I don't, I don't understand anything about it, but that is what happened. I can have documentation from Chrissy. I have documentation I can give David on the phone. Again, I'm more than happy to fix anything that's going wrong, but please understand. I've asked this gentleman twice. I asked him in July, and I asked him when he was in the showroom prior to giving you the complaint that day. That complaint he gave me was from over a year ago, that I'd be more than happy to fix his car, and he said, no, I want money for this. I've asked Michael. I said, no problem. I will work with you. However, no, I want this. I'd be more than happy to take care of these things, but I'm more than willing to give. I cannot work with that. I've given you plenty of documentation to show what I'm telling you to be true. I did not make a lot of money on them. When I called Kyle's, it was $85 to have him put on his card. I said, can you?
I said, "Can you just give him my price and send him down there?" She said, "No." "How much is it for me?" "Sixty-seven fifty." "Great." I had to pay David $1,250, which is a half an hour. He's more than willing to get on the phone and talk about that. Again, this is not what I do.
And then, there was another complaint, too. It was, this was back Karen, didn't he put in writing another complaint that was a gentleman that came in and said that he had bought a car from you, from down, from you, and he said that he traded in his other vehicle, and it was his understanding that you were gonna be paying off his loan?
Okay, that was the complaint that you have unfolded, that was, it also wasn't after, it was the previous...
Previous management, right.
I understand that, but I'm wondering if that was, if that was resolved, because this man said that the car was reposa, the vehicle...
Right, the vehicle was repossessed from what I understand, right? Show me that one.
And he said that it wrecked his credit, so he said he was paying two payments.
And ownership hasn't changed, management may have changed, but ownership hasn't.
Ownership hasn't, so was that problem ever rectified?
I can find out for you, like, in the next two days.
I ran into him at Dollar General, and I told him that, he's gonna be today, and he said, "Shh, he's just gonna let go."
Also, the bill of sale.
So, I think what we have is, what the third thing that I had on my list now, was that we have two complaints that are sitting in the room. We have a third complaint related to the pay, paying off of a vehicle with the bank, and I think that this, this lockman deserves a formal correspondence, put this together in a nice little package that says, "This is the problem, this is how you remediated," whatever that was, such that we have an understanding as to where you stand on at least these three complaints.
Could I ask one more thing?
Yep.
As far as the complaints, what I'd like to do is send both of these gentlemen a letter, certified letter, so we can prove, have a proof that it was received, because maybe it's possible that they won't reply, whatever. And, and we're supposed to get a reply that says, "This is what we want." And at least that will show that we are communicating.
That's why we select word, I'm speaking for us now, we would like your response to the three complaints, such that we have that, and we look to you as the business to take whatever steps are necessary to resolve this thing. Those are your responsibilities. What I will say is that, given these provisos, we have the information, we, and we have the, what you're doing about the complaints, that this document that we're about to sign or that recommend that we sign is on a probationary basis, that if within 30 days that we do not have this information to us, that this doc, that, we're done.
Yeah, I agree 100%.
But could I ask one more thing?
Yep.
I know that now that you've said that, I mean, this fine gentleman, I'm sure they're gentlemen, but they have a motivation now to, not to negotiate anything, at all.
Well, there, it...
We're, we're looking for you to tell us what you're going to do. Even if it's, it's nothing, it's still an answer.
Well, we...
Even if your answer is to do nothing, it's still an answer.
We want a letter from them stating how they are gonna rectify your problems.
Okay, so we'll put our offer, and we'll wait for a reply.
And who was the third one?
The record, everyone likes trucking. Nineteen, I told the law, ninety-nine, I received my interstate compensation.
Is this the one?
I was in the photo school book of the program, I did this all my life.
This was the one?
Under the, this was the file of the certification, you can see my record is flawless, and I have a flawless record of the program. I was also involved with the owner, I was eventually driving the society now.
I want this one corrected, too. Can I make a copy?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We understand that.
Oh, no, no, he's not here.
It's okay, no problem.
Does he have his name?
He will.
I'm gonna make a copy for him right now, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna make a copy for you of the one there that had the vehicle repossessed after it came back, so maybe you can get in touch with him.
So again, my motion would be that we sign the business license on a probationary basis, and that we look to the business to fulfill on the three, three things that we were supposed to.
I agree with him.
How do you want to...
Well, we can, can you get in this, I'd like to look at it, both of us.
They're giving us 30 days, basically.
Yeah, we'll get 30 days, so I'm sure we'll do it for both of us, and look at it.
So do you want me to make copies?
That would be best, I mean, if you can.
No, I mean, yeah.
Copies of it? No, I'd like to, I'd like to take it with me.
Do you wanna make a appointment to go down there? Because it's considered a site visit, and there's not gonna be any policy discussions, we could actually just go on tonight.
He just could, he just could come up here and bring it up here to the office, so that can go.
Yeah, that would work.
I'd like to, and I mean, if you wanna make arrangements to go down there, look at it, up to you, or something, so...
Okay. This is the, that was the gentleman who had the copy. Are you available?
One year.
I was thinking, like, maybe Thursday or Friday.
This Thursday?
A week from Thursday, actually.
Okay. Can I look, can you go home and fill my calendar and get that?
That'd be awesome.
So the motion for, the motion I would give, is that we sign a, a business certificate, license, or...
What is it, what is it? Class, it's a class two dealer.
That this is signed for a 30-day period, such that the town clerk has business information, such that we have contact, accurate contact information, that the complaints that we've, that have come before us, we want formal notification as to where, where they stand with those, what was referred to, I'm missing something.
Could I ask one more question? The three complaints about the vehicle, I just didn't know, thanks, what was it, roof?
The tear in the, tear in the...
Tear in the top.
Don't, don't claim the material of the estate. Everybody's, probably doesn't work with that.
Unfortunately, we have to handle it, document it away now, so...
Document it.
Something that I mean...
That's what they want.
If they, sir, if they have some personal property of yours, that's something that really doesn't go along with us with our agreement.
It has, it would have to actually go through...
It's gonna go through your accords or something to retain it back, not, and so it doesn't have anything really to do with our discussion tonight at all.
Yeah, we don't have jurisdiction, unfortunately, we don't have jurisdiction over something that's treaty coming.
No.
We will still try to fix it.
Isn't some of that partial...
But again, like, they said correctly, that's a police matter, in general, but we'll try to work it.
Well, it's a moral conscious issue, because you're well aware of it.
Correct. Well, I wasn't aware of what's, what happened.
That doesn't have anything to do with our conversation tonight.
Separate story.
We have, we have another, we have to, okay, so I'd like to make a...
So we have a motion.
The motion, I'll stop, I'll stop at that.
Okay, hang for the discussion.
Hang for the discussion, and Beth, I will get back to you and see what...
Great, thank you.
And we'll get back to you as far as the visitor.
And if we need to do it separately, then I'll, I'll swing by onsite, and they can bring it up here for you at your convenience.
Okay. Oh, oh, we can go down?
No, we can, we can do an onsite visit, so we could actually do an onsite visit together, so long as no policies discussed, it's just like when the board of health goes out to look at properties, no policies discussed.
Yeah, we could do it either, well, I'll see what day is good, and then I'll have Karen get back.
Could you notify us when you're coming? So maybe I can do that, probably Thursday.
Getting him there is a trip.
Twenty-seven, that's 28.
When?
After Christmas.
After Christmas.
Twenty-seven or 28, Thursday or Friday.
Just see if you could maybe give us a call and let us know you're coming.
As long as we have your contact information, we will give you a call.
Do you want to be, do you want to be a business colleague?
All right, I said that one too many times, so we need a vote.
Okay, our favor of granting a temporary license or a probation?
Aye.
Aye. You have to make a copy.
I know.
Sorry.
See, you need more germs, so that way you don't get sick.
Yeah.
Touch enough people, although you...
All right, upper... Okay. All right. Now, we would like, what, oral question?
Certainly.
Okay, now, our next session is, we would like to go into executive session under number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, our litigation. If any open meeting may be detrimental effect in the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declared. So I would like to go in, adjourn this meeting at 7:50, and go into executive session, and I will vote to go back into regular session to, to adjourn.
Adjourn. Do you have that motion?
Second.
Oh, you got the second, Lincoln I?
No.
Cusslin I.
Okay.